As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present and can hear me. Steve Chambers. Todd Corrigan. Warkesh Nellin. Ronald Brooks. Can you please mute your mics? Ron Brooks, you can unmute, Ron.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Town officials and employees participating when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Planner Adam Menard.
Yeah.
Efficacy assistant Rachel Pressley.
Yeah.
Good evening, this is an open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, November 9, 2021, now called to order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted both in person and remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, extended to June 16, 2021. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening in person by remote access. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 133747477. And the public can join via computer at gotomeeting.com/join/133747477. Remote access information is posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn cable television. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording this meeting? There being none. According to those, members of the Planning Board and employees and members of the public to participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, but please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recorder. Please rise and join me in a salute to the flag. A flag.
Please, a flag of the state of America.
All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, Chair will go down the line of the members inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly into the microphone in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the Planning Board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. First on the agenda tonight is this applicant, Hazza Management Incorporated, requesting site plan approval under Section 3.2.2.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw. They're 12 tire-housed at 262 Central Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, MAP 56, Parcel 82. They have requested a continuance. Have your vote, Ron.
Yeah. Suppose technically, you could show some bad.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing till the next meeting.
You have a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Warkesh?
Aye.
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye. It is being continued to our next meeting of December.
December 14.
December 14. Second on the agenda is applicant Sean Griffin of Griffin Homes LLC requesting a site plan review under Section 3.2.2.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw. They're two-family residents at 17 Willis Street, MAP 6, Parcel 210. Continued from 1012, 2021. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Zach Kotor with HSMT Group, on behalf of Sean Griffin. So what we have before you tonight, requesting site plan approval. And this comes way of a special permit that was approved back in March to allow the construction of a two-family dwelling in the RL zone. So therefore, we're here for the site plan tonight. The project will involve the construction of a two-family dwelling with associated grading utilities and general site work. Each unit will have an attached garage with paved driveway connecting to Willis Street. One of the units will be occupied by the owner, Mr. Griffin. The other unit will be rented out. You know, this is just to help offset the cost of his mortgage. The proposed overall structure is about 40 by 46 feet, roughly 1,800 square feet. This leaves each unit to be 20 feet by 46 feet long, roughly 900 square feet. This is similar in size to many of the single-family dwellings and the two-family dwellings in the neighborhood. He chose this size just to kind of make sure that this structure would blend in with the given neighbor, the given characteristics of the neighborhood and not, you know, kind of appear as like an oversized structure. The site does contain some bordering vegetated wetlands to the rear property along Newton Street, which are associated with a culvert and the drainage of Newton Street. Under this proposal, that portion of the lot will remain totally undisturbed and the culvert and drainage will remain as is, exactly. The portion of the lot that is to be developed has been designed to minimize any impacts to the wetlands. Again, like we kind of kept everything as close up towards the road as possible just to ensure the protection of those wetlands. And all grading and everything like that has also been done. And this has been in front of the Auburn Conservation Commission and has been approved. That was done a couple of weeks ago. Other than that, the proposal will meet all other dimensional requirements, including fronted setbacks, area. So I believe this would be the last stop on the block for Mr. Griffin. We did have to continue a few times. We were waiting on a review from Graves Engineering. They did come back with that review. And for anybody who hasn't seen it, it was very minor. They had one comment to check some grading. We would adjust the grading in the front like they asked, and we did submit those plans back. Other than that, they were satisfied with the plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions concerned you folks might have. Thank you.
Anybody on the board have any questions? Warkesh? Todd?
No questions.
The conservation approved?
The review was done per conservation. I wasn't having to appear for, there's been practice to appear if you're for duplexes conservation while on button, it's just quick for the conservation issues.
Ron, do you have any questions?
No.
Anyone in the audience have any questions? Being none, I have a couple. On your detail sheet, three of three. You are proposing to use polyethylene tubing for the water line service. I'm not sure if that's according to the Auburn Water District. That would have to be approved by them. You never tap a water main at nine o'clock or three o'clock. You always tap it at 10 or 2. And you put a loop up and then down so where any settlement, it doesn't pull it out of the main. Underneath the curb stop, you put a block. And then where you have the polyethylene tubing going through the foundation instead of under it and up through the floor, I don't know if the grout will seal. And then on your Ys, Ts, and saddles for six inches lateral, I'm not sure what type of pipe that is on the street. If it's PVC, then you would, I would think you would cut a Y in. And if it's AC pipe or transite, then you would probably use the strap-on saddle, but that has to be approved by the Auburn Sewer Department. And then on the sewer trench detail, you have to wrap the entire trench of the stone in filter fabric to prevent migration of fines from the road down or along the lot so you don't get any settlement. And then on the water main detail trench, you have 12 inches of stone, which is fine, but you need a piece of filter fabric between that and the sand you're going to put in so you don't get any settlement. And then there's no driveway detail, so I have no idea how thick your driveway is going in. And is there a curb cut required? And if there is, if there's a curve in the street, that has to be approved by the Highway Department, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, the curb cut permit will be required. And in terms of water and sewer, this will have to get final approval by them before any, you know, permits are issued by them. So they'll, they'll, they'll review it and obviously will comply with any standards or regulations they set forth for us.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
I just have a question on process. Should we be having those departments sign off on these plans before we approve them?
Um, no, there's no need for them to sign off ahead of time. They need to hold. Do that.
So may I have a motion to approve these drawings with the conditions that they get the... Oh, sorry.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Warkesh? Todd?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye. It is now closed. Now for approval, may I have a motion to approve said plans with the caveat of they have to get approval from the Sewer Department, the Water Department, and I would say.
Highway.
Highway Department for the curb cut and the Building Department for the driveway, because I don't know how thick you're putting it in or what's required by the town.
I'll make that motion with those conditions.
I'll second those conditions.
Thank you, Ron. All those in favor, Warkesh?
Aye.
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye. It is a vote.
Thank you so much for your time. Have a good night.
Next on the agenda is discussion of open space and recreation plan. Adam?
Well, I've never seen it yet. This is the final draft, I guess you could call it, of the open space plan. I'm looking for the board, hopefully have a chance to review it, to do a letter of support. It's preferred to have multiple letters of support when I send this to the state. The board is selecting order to support it two weeks ago. And I just received CMRP's with a letter of support about an hour ago. They need, the state's going to be, they'll be sending back, no doubt, comments of changes that need to be made and once those changes are made with the Open Space Committee, I'll call back to the state for final approval.
So I was a member of that Open Space Committee. We had quite a few members of the town, spent several months and did some public outreach trying to update the plan and make sure it's inclusive as it can be for what the town has and potential for the future. So I would recommend that we support this or provide a letter of support with this to the state. I don't know if anyone has any questions or...
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair. So I read it and I'm supportive. I just have a question because I probably missed it. It's a very large document. Was there anything in there in terms of strategies for the town to actually achieve the type of land protection or historic protection that was, that the open space plan advocates for, such as historic districts, Community Preservation Act, land banks, conservation protections? Anything along that lines, sort of to advise the town on next steps after this open space report? What came to mind is 262 Central Street and how it's a historic house, dates back to the founding. And unfortunately, on either the town bylaws or, you know, any of our, any of our governing zoning bylaws has a firm way for the town to protect that property. It's, it's.
Bylaw in there that if it doesn't meet the requirements that fits in with the neighborhood, they can not approve it.
Right, but there's no other way other than that in terms of historic preservation or preservation, you know?
I agree with you.
That's that.
There wasn't really too much discussed on those particulars. Preservation Act is on the master plan. That was, that was mentioned in there on this plan. Questioned support that we haven't really seriously pursued it. And a local historic district that was mentioned by the historical commission two meetings ago, I think it was. That's certainly the possibility to look at over the next year or so, but there wasn't any specific in this particular plan.
We didn't receive any feedback at the time regarding that. Obviously, more has come to light. But we did discuss the open spaces, not necessarily.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, I read the document. I saw, you know, the discussion and the prioritization of open space and conservation, but nothing for the town to pursue or recommendations for the town to pursue in order to put those protections in place.
Nothing in the historical. Do we have one more question? Where's the process here? So anything that any of the boards do have to get certified by the Attorney General?
The zoning bylaws do. This will go to, yeah, because I shall, it's a crime, chief. Looks just to some things in this plan before they, they have to approve the plan. This plan will give grant opportunities for the town. They'll have this plan, they're losing out on certain grant, grant opportunities. That's the... Yes.
Seven-year cycle. In order to be eligible for a lot of the grants, you have to have an updated plan. So that's the reason for the change, but also in seven years, your town has shifted. So you can also see the progress if you read the other plan. A lot of things are already in action. Things don't happen overnight, but this is a good stepping stone and can bring us towards our goals in the future.
It's a crime.
John, can I ask Adam a question?
Sure.
Adam, did you send that to us in the packages or by email?
In the email. The documents, well, five of the cages, so I just sent a link to the document.
Can you possibly send it to me by mail, please?
Oh, you can have this copy. I could drop, I could drop off a copy to you. I won't mail it, it'll cost 20 bucks to mail. I'll drop it off.
So we do expect changes as well in recommendations as part of it.
Yeah, this, this state undoubtedly will have suggestions that they, suggestions that they want made.
But our deadline was March of next year, is that when?
Uh, this month, the current plan expires. So we started this process a year ago. So the goal was to kind of have it done this year. So we're close to being on target.
John, can I say something to Adam again?
Of course, Ron, go ahead.
Adam, I, Adam, I can call maybe in the morning and then drive by and you can give it to me.
Sure, that'll be fine.
I'll try to do that tomorrow because I'd like to look at it. I didn't get it by the email.
All right, yeah, just let me know.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to ask for a motion to provide a letter of support for this, knowing that it is draft one and they'll have opportunities.
May I have someone make that motion? May I have a second? All those in favor, Warkesh? Todd? Steve? Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye. It is a vote.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Gervais Plumbing, 200 Southbridge Street, with a modification to their property. Is there anyone here representing Gervais? If you come forward, actually go to the podium, say your name and address. Uh, if you live in town, fine. If not, the property.
Scott Gervais, part owner of 200 Southbridge Street. Home address is 174 Gould Road, Charlton, Mass. So we're asking permission to expand our parking lot towards our grass area. We have a couple of trailers that we have. With snow coming and everything, it's been kind of muddy in the grass. So we're just looking to put some crushstone down, get rid of some topsoil, and then put some crushstone down about eight to 10 inches. And there was a couple of trees that we were going to remove.
John, it's Ronnie. Could you have some, pinpoint that location of where this is for me? I can't quite know where it is.
It's the old KG sign building.
You know where the old KG sign building was, Ron? If you're heading towards the west, you're going to the left-hand side.
Across from Bell's, the warning garden.
I got it, I got it. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
The trailers, would they be removed from the, from the lot?
The trees? The tree, yes, they're tow behind cargo trailers. But right now, where they're stored, backing up and getting to everything, it's kind of a mess. So we're just looking to ease everything.
The property line's not indicated on the plan. Is that the dash line, EOR? Do you know where the property line is?
Yeah, it, um, the property line is, it's the bold line, just in front of the back of the trees. And then it goes down to the Worcester Providence Railroad area. And then beyond that is the, I believe, the town water swamp area.
So the two trees that you're indicating remove, are those on your property or town property?
My property.
They are on your property.
You own this entire triangle, correct?
Yes. Yeah, it's two trees up front and one over. It's to the right-hand side of the propane tank that's already there now.
So the dash line is the edge of right-of-way?
That's Route 12 is the street.
Right, but the, the dash line, so that's the edge of, the end of right-of-way, I'm assuming? That's the property line?
You're talking about the back toward Providence Railroad?
No, I'm talking on the other side, on Southbridge Street side.
So the two trees that are looking to be removed, they are within right-of-way?
Are they within our right-of-way or are they within the property?
State, it wouldn't be ours. Route 12's a numbered route, it's a state road. So you may have to get permission from the state to.
Okay.
So is there a reason why you're removing them? You can't operate this without, with keeping the trees in?
The way the trees are positioned, and we don't want to do any further curb cuts or anything like that, because there is a berm that goes up for water deflection. We're just going to use our regular driveway entrance. And then by taking those two trees down, we can get the trailers in and out easier.
Have you applied to the state for any of these?
No.
Those look to be in the right-of-way according to the SS's map.
Right. So that's, that's state property?
Okay.
So you're, you're proposing to park your vehicles on state property?
Park vehicles on state property?
Yeah. So where you have those two trees that say remove, that's actually state property? That's not your property. So are you proposing to take the public property and make it your private storage?
So I, I guess I'm a little confused because that front island and everything like that is, we maintain all that stuff. Our, our sign is on that island and then we have, you know, driveways and all that stuff are in there. I thought it was just a buffer zone from the town to, if they needed to do anything.
It's not the town, it's Southbridge Street, belongs to the state. Not town or all of them. So I don't know how big the right-of-way is there, maybe 25 feet.
So then I can delete that section out of it then? So that way, there's no question until we get permission from the state.
Then you'll have to ask the state if you can actually use that for parking.
Yeah. Well, if I leave the trees up, then there will be no question we won't get.
Right, yeah, or even the tree removal, you would need their permission.
They talked to a vantage tree, that they were going to remove the trees, and they said there was no permits for tree removal, so.
It's, it's, it is no permit required if it's your private property, but this is public property. So you would need permission from the state to remove it.
Okay.
The other two trees, which are well inside your lot, it appears, I think you're okay. You have any questions, Steve?
So I know there are wetlands nearby. Are they within the wetland zone?
Don't think so. Wetlands is further down here past the drive.
Okay. Just a question, I don't have it, I don't see it. I just want to make sure that we're not overstepping or if it goes out during due date.
For some reason, it does trigger that, that gets to conservation. That wouldn't impact this board's vote.
So I do have a bit of concern. I know the property before, there was a lot of junk left behind. I think in your narrative, you were looking for storage of additional things. Are you going to look to maintain things outside of the storage containers? Or are only storage?
There was talk, because of material shortage in the world and everything, we were going to pre-buy some plastic piping and stuff on pallets and store those outside, which can get wet and everything, but it would be material that we use daily.
And those, created any from the road or anything?
No.
I know, I'm, I, I just don't want it to become what that, the sign place ended up being, so.
Oh, I understand.
We had, originally, when we approved this, there was some fencing and parking behind the fencing. And I just want to make sure that it's at least consistent or we don't make it worse. You know, I, again, palletized items that are for use, I don't necessarily object to. And then storage within the containers, I'm okay with. I don't know if we can make a recommendation on the material they use? Is that something we can provide guidance on or does that matter?
What kind of materials you mean?
Well, since they said either crushstone or the grinds, so I.
Adjust the preference.
Well, if you put the grindings in, you're adding to the impervious area. If you put the stone in, you're keeping the pervious area, permeable area the same.
And that's why I'm asking this. I don't want to have to trigger a full review. I think this is a minor modification and when we get to that, we'll. Just want to make sure that we're not going to recommend. Those were my questions. I think you answered no curb cuts, so that's acceptable.
Ron, do you have anything else? Warkesh, do you have any other questions?
So I, would this, the use of the storage thing? Would this be used for, you know, for, for disposal?
No.
Just purely for storage of?
Yes. Yeah, we don't, we have two dumpsters that we have on-site and everything goes in the dumpsters. We don't store any trash on the grounds or anything.
Todd, do you have anything else?
No.
Ron, do you have any questions?
No, John.
Okay, my only question is, I understand the proposed 40-foot Conex box. Is that 1,000-gallon propane tank existing? Are you going to put that in?
That's already there. That was approved when we did the renovation. We got rid of all the oil heat in the building and transferred it over to a higher efficiency propane. Well, now prices are going up, so who knows?
It was going up 3%.
Yeah.
I think we would recommend stone.
Okay.
Instead of the grindings, because the grinding will add to your impervious area or create more runoff.
That's fine.
So nobody has a problem with that. Could I have a motion to approve the plan based on they get approval? If they want to cut down trees, they got to get approval from the state.
So if we stay within side of our property line and don't go into the state line, then we're all, we can.
And I'll be honest with you, I prefer that. I prefer that they do not remove the trees.
This is a minor modification? No.
I'll make a motion that this is a minor modification?
May I have a second? You have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Duarkesh? Todd?
Aye.
Steve? Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye. It is a vote. Do I do any further like approve this plan? Or we set Adam?
A stone condition.
Could I get a motion to approve this based on they use crushstone for their future parking and storage area?
I'll make a motion that they use crushstone for the future area and do not do any work without approval from the state within that.
You have a second? All those in favor, Duarkesh? Todd?
Aye.
Steve? Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye. It is a vote.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Meeting minutes of ten, twelve, twenty-one. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written? You have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Duarkesh?
Aye.
Todd, Steve?
Aye.
Ron, did you watch the tape?
Yes, I did.
Okay, do you?
Aye.
Okay, myself, John Regan, aye. It is a vote. There's no new business unforeseen by me. Is there any update from the town planner?
Not, not, not really. Area square is is the only thing that's really been going on recently. Working on more grants and trying to really make some progress on the park over the next year.
May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Duarkesh? Todd? Steve? Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye. It is a vote. Meeting is adjourned.